Check, check.
All right, welcome everyone. I will now call the, to order, the regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And first up, I will ask our clerk, trustee Andrew Cottle, to do the roll call.
Thank you, Madam President. President Raymond.
Present.
Vice President Taylor.
I'm here.
And I am here. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Student Representative Gomez.
Here.
All right, Madam President, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to put our representative from the Washoe County Health District on the spot, and ask Ms. Heather Kirwin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Agenda Item 1.04 is action to adopt the agenda. I would like to ask my fellow trustees to accept moving Agenda Item 5.01 up following public comment, 3.01. I think it would be great to hear the review of the data indicators before we hear Agenda Item 4.01, and this was a recommendation also of trustee Cottle, so.
Move for approval as recommended by the chair.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Simon Holland, second by trustee Cottle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, and any opposed? Thank you very much. Next up is our consent agenda, and I know there are a few things that we'll review for the consent. So I will first ask if any trustees would like to pull an item from the consent agenda. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to have Item 2.13, I'm sorry, 2.14, 2.14 taken out of consent so we can celebrate that and take special action on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other items removed from the consent? Okay, then I'd be looking for a motion unless there's any comment anyone would like to make. Okay, trustee Minneto.
On item, item number 2.15, I just feel like I need to put on the record that I continue opposing the SLOs. However, since the state law is in place for that, I will have to vote yes, as I vowed I would.
Thank you, trustee Minneto, and I'll just take the time to remind the community that the school district approved at our last board meeting a bill draft request in which we will be going to the legislature in 2021 to request a suspension of the SLOs, but that would not take effect until that was approved at the legislative session, so this is an item related to this school year. JJ, do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay, so then I would be looking for a motion to approve consent agen-
Madam President.
Sorry, Sharon, trustee Kennedy.
Madam President, I would just like some clarification on 2.09.
Okay.
And I realize I probably should have sent that in earlier, but I do have a question about the fact that this is a program that is for six students only, and I'm wondering if Ms. Van Tress is here and that she could maybe clarify this program, how those students are chosen, and what we get for that money.
Absolutely, so I think we'll pull that then as a separate discussion and vote separately on that item. So then, if there's no further requests to pull, okay, then I'd be initially looking for approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda Items 2.02 through, I have to make sure I get this right, 2.08, 2.10 through 2.13, and 2.15 through 2.19.
Some move, Madam President.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice President Taylor, second by trustee Minneto. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so then we will now hear from our area superintendent, Ms. Jen Van Tress, about Agenda Item 2.09.
Good afternoon, President Raymond, Superintendent McNeil, and members of the board. I'm here to answer, I'm Jen Van Tress, Area Superintendent for Area Five and Special Education, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the contract with the UNR Path to Independence.
Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you. Could you just explain what this program is, how the students are chosen?
Sure.
And essentially, what we get for that $60,000.
So, yes, so the program, the Path to Independence program, let me give you a little background on special education. Special education, we are required to provide services starting at age three through age 22. So for students that have already completed their high school equivalency as far as getting an adjusted diploma, they do that at age 18, we still are required to provide some sort of transition programs, VOK rehab programs, from 18 to 22. The Path to Independence program is one of those programs that offers services for students. It gives students the opportunity to have the experience of being a college student, of being able to participate in classes at UNR. They do go to classes, they get grades, they have support people that go with them into the classes so that they can be successful in that environment. At the same time, they participate in VOK training at the university, so they might work in the offices, they might participate as an assistant in the class, or they might participate in other activities across the community. And then during that time, they're working on their skills and their transition services. So it's an opportunity for students to kind of get that experience that may not be available because they didn't graduate with a standard diploma. How we choose the students, it's a collaboration between the Washoe County School District and the Path to Independence staff, and then the decision made with the IEP team at the school sites. So it's a, it works together to give kids another opportunity.
Are there more applicants than we have slots for? Because it is only six, correct?
Correct. It's still a relatively new program. It's not very well-known in northern Nevada. It's actually, there are other programs, other students that participate out of Lyon County, and then Clark County has a similar program with UNLV, so, but it's still new.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And are there any other questions for Ms. Van Tress? Well, we have her. Nope. Okay, then I would be looking for a separate action on this item. If anyone would like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 2.09.
Move approval.
Okay, I saw lots of hands and heard some voices. I think I heard trustee Simon Holland make the motion, and I saw trustee Kennedy's hand go up, so I'll give her the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we will now move on to Agenda Item 2.14, which is approval of the agreement with Van Wart-Bagadi Architects in the amount of $9,601,920 for the professional architectural and engineering design services on the Debbie Smith Career Technical Education Facility project. And we are joined by Mr. Adam Seersey.
Hi, good afternoon. Adam Seersey, Chief Facilities Officer for the school district. Just a brief overview here, this item is related to the remodel of the existing HUG High School campus, future Debbie Smith Career and Technical Academy. This is a project connected to the new Proctor-HUG High School over at Wild Creek, which is under construction. These two projects are tied to one another and have been in a state of planning for many years now. As you may recall, the board has previously approved action associated with the educational specifications for the programming of the Career and Technical Academy at the Debbie Smith site. That's been completed and will be coming to the board likely in our next meeting for presentation and your approval. Recently as well, moving forward based off of that programming, we received approval from the Capital Funding Protection Committee, subsequently, the Board of Trustees for the funding associated with the design agreement, which is what the Item 2.14 here this evening is pertaining to. This design agreement is all-inclusive, so to speak. This takes us from the very beginning, you know, it leads off of the educational specifications all the way through the start of construction, and then through construction administration, all the way to the completion of construction. So this agreement includes a series of subconsultants, really as many as seven or eight, you know, mechanical engineers, structural engineers, civil engineers, landscape architects. All of those subconsultants are underneath, in this case, Van Wart-Bagadi Architects. I should also mention, they were competitively selected through an RFP process for this project. They have a long history of excellence as a design architecture- process for this project. They have a long history of excellence as a design architecture firm for the school district and across northern Nevada. But it's a, it's a large agreement, many subconsultants over a long duration of time. And furthermore, it is informed by tremendous understanding of the scope of this project. Through the edspec process and due to the fact that we know as much about the existing facility as we do, we understand the challenges that this will inevitably present. The needed, the need to demolish and reconstruct certain areas of the campus, remodel and rehabilitate other areas of the campus, sorting all of that out, delivering it in the most cost-effective and efficient manner, in part while students are actively occupying the campus, all went into informing this negotiated fee proposal. So that said, the dollars associated with it are on the upper end of the range that we would expect to see for a construction project with a budget of 70 million, as this project is currently stated. But that said, should it be approved this evening, the team is fully in place. We have entered into an agreement with a C-Mar contractor Q&amp;D construction to help us with the design phase, and you'll see a lot more activity and action being presented to you over the next 12 months and nearing construction, even late into 2021. Of course, grand plan will be to move the students to the new Proctor HUG school in 2022, '23 school year, vacate the existing campus, do the majority of this construction, and reopen it in 2023. So that's kind of a brief overview of what this design agreement is intended to facilitate, and I'll be happy to discuss that in any more depth with you. Thank you.
Great. Very exciting. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Cersei. That was a great overview. This is a tremendously challenging project, and, and it certainly, as you said, requires some synchronization with the project that we have underway. Just very excited about this going forward, and just wanted to, to celebrate and, and thank you all for all the work to get us moving forward on this project. So very much appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for, for stepping up.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Cersei? Vice, uh, trustee Simon Holland?
I would just, if there are no other questions, I would just move to approve the agreement with Van Wart Bagadi Architects, the amount of $9,601,920 for the professional architectural and engineering design services on the Debbie Smith Career Technical Education Facility project.
All right, I have a motion by trustee Simon Holland, second from Vice President Taylor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Great, that motion passes unanimously. Again, really exciting. Thank you, Adam. Right, the next item on our agenda is agenda item 3.01, which is public comment. This is general public comment. For this item, we'll be looking to hear from individuals that are here to speak on something not related to a specific agenda item. If you are unable to stay later in the meeting for an agenda item that's scheduled to be heard, you can speak now, but you can just only do it the one time on that item. And I know we are also still accepting email public comment. Emails can be sent to publiccomments@washoschools.net. The trustees receive those emails prior to the meeting and, and throughout the meeting. We read them individually, and then we do have our recording secretary read the names of those individuals that submitted email public comment at each public comment period. So I will now hand it over to Ms. JJ Batshelder.
So the board received public comments from Zane Taylor, Tanya Coleman, Morgan Mosley, Akasha, Matt Morrison, Dallas Holsey, Mia Albright, Ayla Morrison, Jennifer Leha.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Lea, and I am a teacher at Washoe County. Some of you might recognize me. I was in a couple articles by BuzzFeed News and USA Today where I talked about my concerns with Washoe County's banning of pride flags in the classroom. I'd like to talk with all of you today about why I am still upset with this policy and what I think needs to change. But first, I'd like to give you a little background about me. I grew up in Arizona, in a very small town in Arizona, and I didn't come to live in Reno until I started at UNR. Growing up in a small town in Arizona, I never felt safe to be out about my sexual orientation. It was commonplace to hear my classmates make fun of each other by saying, "That's so gay." It was also commonplace to hear our P.E. coaches call us sissies if we weren't running fast enough. Our teachers didn't mention sexual orientation, except to tell us that it was pornographic or unnatural. And if there was anything that my school taught me about LGBT, it was that anybody who identified that way was gross, was a sinner, was evil, and was going to hell. It took me until I was 22 years old to finally learn to love and accept myself, and to finally feel safe coming out to the people in my small hometown. Now, I want you to compare that to my students that are currently in school. I teach seventh and eighth graders who are 12 to 14 years old. My students don't say, "That's so gay." I have two students in my class this year who felt safe enough to be out as transgender to all of the students and staff. I have about a dozen students who wrote their getting to know me letters back in August, where they talked about how they felt, finally felt proud to be out and felt safer knowing they had a teacher who was out and proud too. Just because I had a rainbow flag in my classroom, these students could understand that they're not alone, and they're not evil or gross for loving who they love. LGBT youth are twice as likely to have chronic absences because they do not feel safe at schools. Two-thirds of LGBT youth do not report harassment at school because they don't believe their schools care about them. A third of them who do report harassment say that their schools did nothing about it. LGBT youth are five times as likely to attempt suicide. The rainbow flag in my classroom is just one of the ways I help prevent these problems. It's not political, it's at its core suicide prevention for LGBT youth. The policy that you have in place, the one that outlaws political speech in the classroom, is a good one, and is probably and absolutely necessary for schools, especially given the current political climate. But this body needs to have a serious conversation about what is and is not political. To tell a gay student that they, that you accept them for who they are, that cannot be deemed political speech. The rainbow flag doesn't represent any political party or any organization. It simply represents LGBT people, people who should be guaranteed equal rights regardless of gender, race, or sexual orientation. Explain to me how guaranteed human rights can be considered political speech. I, I know I'm running out of time, so I'll just leave you with this last thought. We talk a very big game in Washoe County about teaching social and emotional learning in schools, but how can we tell students to love and accept themselves when we don't allow our staff to do the same? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lea.
Casey Smith.
Hello, Washoe County School Board of Trustees. By prohibiting the pride flag in classrooms, you are sending a dangerous message. You are marginalizing LGBTQ+ students, staff, and parents. You are telling them that they are not worthy to show their identity to others. You are telling them that their lives have no place in school. I have, I've had many experiences of being discriminated against for who I am. I have been kicked out of college for being gay. I have been asked to leave a restaurant because I put my arm around my wife. I have had gay slurs yelled at me while I was walking down the street. And now my employer is sending the same message. Who I am, my identity, has no safe place. As a gay person, the pride flag is a symbol of my identity. My life is not a political matter. Let me say that again. The pride flag is a symbol of my identity, not a political matter. And you are simplifying the identity of millions of people by calling it political. Even if you don't care about the opinions of your own staff, you should care about students. They need our support. Here are the statistics that demonstrate the importance of creating a safe space for them. Seventy-one percent of LGBTQ students report hearing homophobic remarks from teachers and/or school staff because of their gender expression. Fifty-three percent of those students do not report experiences because they doubted an intervention. Sixty percent of those students feel unsafe at school because of their sexual orientation. Sixty percent of those students who did report an incident said the school staff did nothing in response, or they told the student to ignore it. By displaying a pride flag in a classroom, a teacher can non-verbally tell LGBTQ students, "You matter. I am here for you. You are safe." By prohibiting a sign of identity and inclusion in the classroom, you are putting the safety of LGBTQ students at risk. Our superintendent said publicly, "It is important that all of our students and families feel welcome and appreciated in our school buildings," and I agree. But you cannot claim that you are inclusive just by checking diversity boxes. You have to make students and staff feel safe and included. You cannot say that the school district is inclusive and put in place policies that hurt a group of people who are still marginalized and attacked and discriminated against to this very day. I am urging the board to reverse their directives regarding the pride flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Catigan.
to you about my concerns regarding the phrase "do more with less" and how this mindset has done nothing more but leave us with increasing levels of teacher shortages, never ending less of additional expectations with less resources, and overall dismal, dismal per pupil spending levels. I urge you to do what's right for our students, community, and future by advocating for our need to properly fund our public schools. A few days after the board meeting, I saw an opinion piece written by Dr. McNeil on the Nevada Independent website acknowledging that our schools are underfunded, and encouraging readers to add their voices to those currently speaking out on the needs of our public schools. Reading this piece made me feel as though Dr. McNeil had listened to my words and the words of many others who came before you at the last board meeting. I shared Dr. McNeil's piece with others and encouraged them to start speaking out as well. Thank you, Dr. McNeil, for taking this step. I acknowledge your effort to bring light to the reality of the do more with less mindset that we have placed upon our education system in Washoe County. Writing your opinion piece was a step in the right direction, but it's exactly that, one step. I am eager to know what is your next step, and what is your next step, and your next step, and your next step, and your next step. What direction will you go from here? Before we know it, February will be here, and the next legislative session will begin. Will you be joining us as we line the streets of Carson? Will you be calling your legislators to let them know that our dismal per pupil funding levels have done enough damage, and that we have had enough of doing more with less? Will you be talking to your family, friends, colleagues, neighbors, and any Nevada resident of voting age that you happen to meet about the need for us to make a change on how we value our public schools? It is my commitment to continue to speak out and encourage others to find their voice until we have a solution. I realize that attempting to address a daunting problem such as our lack of adequate per pupil funding, it's not going to be solved overnight. This issue will take time to solve. However, I also realize that the longer we wait, the more time it will take. I encourage you to join me tonight in taking your next step in advocating for our need to properly fund our public schools. Continue to do what's right for our students, for our community, and for our future.
Thank you, Ms. Catigan.
Kaylin Evans.
Hi, my name is Kaylin Evans. I'm an educator here in Washoe County School District, the president of Empower Nevada Teachers. I appreciate the time to speak with you all today. We're here again to continue our push to bring awareness and to call on our board to continue to advocate the state for funding education adequately. I just provided you guys with some sample graphics. These graphics, we have designed and been getting out to the community using our various social media platforms. They highlight different issues that our education system is under, given the lack of funding and resources from the state of Nevada. This is just the start of these sample graphics. We have about a dozen more that we're going to be creating and continuing to push out, because we understand that it's through awareness and action that we're able to bring about positive changes that we need in our education system. All of these graphics here before you highlight not just Washoe County, but the state of Nevada. What we are trying to make sure that we do is highlight every area, and also not just the negative impacts that these, that the lack of funding is having on our education system, but also how education can benefit our economic viability in our community. Okay, so it's really important that we continue to push this messaging. Along with using these as social media graphics, we also have started planning neighborhood canvassing campaigns, where we're going to have dozens of educators knocking on people's doors and sharing these graphics along with other literature that we've created to help bring awareness directly to the community. It's extremely important that the community members understand the issues that we are facing. The discussions that all of you I know have with elected officials and business leaders are extremely important, but it's not just the conversations that you are directly having. We need thousands of community members calling their elected officials, sending letters, coming out to join educators on the streets to advocate in Carson City this legislative session. It's through these type of populist actions that we can bring about real change. A big shout out, thank you, Dr. McNeil, for your letter to the Nevada Independent, bringing, highlighting some of these issues that we're facing. As was previously spoken, we need every person in a position of power to continue to highlight the issues that we are facing and how they are caused by the lack of funding and resources that the state of Nevada has done for decades and continue to do so. So we need your help. We're going to continue to mobilize educators and get educators and community members in the streets and bring about the real change that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Isabel Peralta.
My name is Isabel Peralta, recent graduate from Galena High School's class of 2020, currently studying at Stanford University. I am here representing Washoe County Students for Change. Thank you. I am here representing Washoe County Students for Change with Diversifier Narrative, in an agreement with Senate Resolution 88 passed by the Associated Students of the University of Nevada. I am speaking to you today on the homeland of the Washoe people. It has been 60 days since the RGJ published the article detailing that teachers were not permitted to support Black Lives Matter in the classroom. Afterwards, we also found out that teachers could not have pride symbols in their classrooms. These decisions have been made under the allowance of Policy 1310, which prohibits partisan activities. Effectively standing up for your queer BIPOC students and staff was made partisan by the leaders who intend to protect us. Hannah Branch has already stated the flaws in this decision in the context of 1310, but I'd like to take a look at the words, "The board has drafted in the name of progress and equality." In this draft, it is written, "The Board of Trustees stands firmly against all acts of individual and systemic racism, acknowledging that there can be no tolerance for mistreatment, and vowing to reflect upon its policies to ensure its commitment to anti-racism." Where did this? Where did this vow go when you contributed to systemic oppression of your black and queer students by targeting the very people, phrases, and symbols that are commitments to protecting them? The board also quotes, also quote vows to work proactively to identify institutional barriers that may negatively influence student learning and perpetuate achievement gaps. Washoe County leadership has become this institutional barrier, and achievement gaps are perpetuated when students can't explicitly see support from their teachers. It's perpetuated when any hope for a career and community that values their unadulterated presence and identity is denied to them before they can even graduate. The Board of Trustees quote vows to make decisions with a deliberate awareness of the impediments to learning faced by students of color, to openly talk, challenge, and confront racism. Challenge yourselves now to see how your students of color are affected by your decision. How I feel standing here before you, feeling I've given 12 years of my brown queer life studying in this district only to see students and teachers be disrespected this way. Be deliberately aware of how you're affecting us because your passivity continues to hurt. Challenge what you mean when you say you have an obligation to accommodate and welcome students and staff from a wide variety of backgrounds and the meaning behind your past remarks saying that we are also entering the election season. Have your students and staff not spent enough of their life accommodating for bigotry and hatred?
And as you know, our task force will be bringing forward our resolution, our anti-racism resolution, at the next board meeting on October 27th. So I hope that you'll be able to participate also in that discussion as well. Thank you.
That's all I have for this item.
All right, thank you very much, everyone, for your efforts to be here for public comment and for those of you that submitted public comment by email. As we addressed at the top of the meeting, we will be moving Agenda Item 5.0 up next. This is a review of data indicators of COVID-19 community risk to include but not limited to risk assessments, test positivity, community-wide case rates, and hospitalizations, case incidences in schools, adequacy of staffing levels, and other applicable factors, and if indicators suggest very high risk or greater for up to seven days. Consideration by the Board of Trustees, relevant actions, including but not limited to changes to learning models. This is for discussion and possible action, and we are joined by Dr. Paula Lamarcas, our chief strategies officer, and Heather Kerwin, chief epidemiologist for the Washoe County Health District. I was very pleased that when Dr. McNeil and I talked a few weeks ago about this agenda item as we were previewing today's meeting, that she and Dr. Lamarcas had already started in motion the plans for this presentation and action item today. Although we have not been at that very high risk for that seven-day period or at all, I don't think it was important to me, and I know because of the work you had done to prepare for today, that we have this discussion and hear from you all about this because we did see an uptick since our last meeting when we were at, I believe, the moderate level and are now at the high-risk level on that threat meter, which is just one of the places we look for the data. So I appreciate the work that the staff did in preparation for today, and I appreciate our guests making it so that we can hear a little bit more about what's happening in the community and in our schools with COVID-19.
Thank you, President Raymond, Dr. McNeil, members of the board. For the record, my name is Paula Lamarcas, chief strategies officer, and I will allow Heather Kerwin to introduce herself.
Thank you for having me, Heather Kerwin, with the Washoe County Health District, epidemiologist. Proud to have worked with Jeremy and the rest of the team, the mayor's task force, to have some input into this model.
I do want to extend apologies, so to speak, from Dr. Smith as well as Dr. Nielsen. Both of them had some unexpected commitments come up today, and they were unable to join us. I did speak with Dr. Smith just before the meeting. I'm going to walk through the slides that he was prepared to present, and there's some slides we're going to present that are more of the Washoe County School District perspective. Ms. Kerwin is here to answer any questions, and she's an expert in these areas, and I am so thankful that she's here to help us through this. So... Okay. Now I'm afraid of the microphone. All right. So as President Raymond stated, we're going to begin just with a look at the risk meter from the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. And we have been in this orange region now for a couple of weeks, I think. We haven't gone up into the red region. We were very close on a couple of days. Today, we're at a 7.0. Our upload said 6.0. We got a text file later that said 7.0, and we'll make that change. That really has resulted through, risk assessments are up, cases per 100,000 are up, test positivity has plateaued, but it is above where we want it to be, obviously. And then interventions as a result of COVID, either general hospital intervention or ICU bed intervention is up as well. And we're going to walk through each of those. So these are, those are the five general categories. With hospital interventions due to COVID and hospital capacity, there's actually two sub-indicators for each of those, split by ICU or just general hospital. This is the graphic for risk assessments. We are seeing an increase in risk assessments. Ms. Kerwin, can you remind the Board of Trustees what really risk assessments are all about?
Sure. So the risk... The risk assessments are what we predominantly use from back in March to do screening. This was introduced because we did not have testing capacity to test every single person who was coming through what we call our post, which is our drive-through point of screening and testing. And we have since used these risk assessments to better capture contact information and risk information, epidemiologic travel, who they may have come into contact with. And we use this information to help us produce lab requisition slips and the things that need to accompany those specimens. So we utilize these risk assessments and the numbers because they are one of our first waves that we see before we then see a high number of positives come through. It's one of our early indicators, just the demand for testing alone in our community.
So we have recently seen quite a bit of an increase with respect to the risk assessments. I am not on the risk assessments. But they did drop in the last couple of days. However, you never know. And that's kind of been the story of this data all along, is you never know. It bounces up and down. With test positivity, actually, I'm going to back up really quick. I skipped an important slide. This was a long-term just trend of the overall risk meter scores. So what you can see is that we have not been up in that red region yet. We have approached it. We've hit seven a couple of times. Test positivity, it's at 8.2 today. It was at, it's only being updated weekly. The meter is using the figures produced by the governor's task force. Those at this point are only being updated weekly. It was at 8.4 the previous couple of weeks, so we saw a little bit of a downturn there. But it is above, sort of, we have a threshold at seven. We want to be underneath seven. Actually, seven still gets you one point, but above seven gets you two points. New daily cases, we've seen a significant increase in cases over the last several weeks now, three weeks. It has begun to maybe tier down a little bit, which is a good sign, but we are higher than we were in early September, and then it started kind of creeping up. Now it's plateauing again. Hospitalizations due to COVID, you see this, I can't really point at the screen, but you can see where the trend line, I think that's sort of in the middle of September, moving into the third week of September, we saw a real increase in the number of hospitalizations specifically due to COVID. We see that same trend with ICU bed use due to COVID. That has really affected the meter. There's two points right now that we're scoring with that particular metric. And then total hospital bed use, this, we're sort of flat. We did see a similar increase, and that was obviously correlated with the increase due to the COVID interventions. However, in terms of total hospital capacity, we're in really good shape at this point. This is still, we're zero on the, on the meter with this particular metric. ICU bed use has gone up, but still, the slope is definitely rising, however, we're still under 50% capacity. Okay. So as you know, and really through your direction, we began updating data several times a week at our own website, and we source the risk meter, we source data from the state, and then we source data from the Washoe County Health District. And I do want to thank Heather for all of her work with this. I don't, I'm not quite sure where you find all the time in the day, and I mean that. She's constantly responsive to us. She's sending us files Friday nights, late Friday nights. We're getting uploads three times a week. She's also got the UNR team, I think they're a UNR team, but their data team working with us. We get data uploads for school-aged children, not necessarily Washoe County School District children, but school-aged children on a daily basis, and that has been tremendously helpful. So with our dashboard, we kind of report data in sort of three layers. We kind of do the broad community data, we give the risk meter indicator, we provide cases per 100,000, that's daily cases per 100,000, average daily cases, and we look at test positivity. This picture here is a week old now, so it's been updated, I think, three times since this picture, but because of posting two board docs, we had to use this. The middle section is school-aged children. We have seen increases just with the community as a whole. We've seen increases with school-aged children. And then at the bottom tier, we are reporting school district-specific cases. And those two things are not going to match up, and that's simply because there's more kids in the community than our kids going to our particular schools. We have charter schools, we have private schools, we have a whole bunch of home schools, and we have kids that are in these age groups that just aren't school-aged yet and/or they're in college, so among 18-year-olds. Most of those are in college at this point in time. I do want to show you a couple of graphs. This is a graph of sort of raw daily cases. So the blue line up at the top, that's all persons over the age of 18. The orange line are people age 11 to 18. The green line, I believe, I'll have to look, and I don't have my glasses on, the green line, one of those two lines is for 0 to 5 years old, and the other is for, or 0 to 4 years old, and the other line is for 5 to 10. So this next slide is a better way to look at this. So all the scores have been converted to cases per 100,000. Essentially, what we see is our 11 to 18-year-olds, their case rates on a daily basis are very similar to the case rates for the community as a whole, or for folks older than 18. However, our children that are in elementary school, that's represented by the green line, they're significantly below in terms of daily case rates. And our youngest children, some of whom are in our preschools, their case rates per 100,000 are also considerably lower than the community as a whole. We wanted to put this comparison in here. It's a little clunky, it's not super clean, but we have gotten a lot of questions about why the school-specific data doesn't match with the community-wide school-age data. So this is an attempt to try and provide some of that. So on the left-hand side of the table, you have age levels, so this is just community-wide. We have the 5 to 10-year-old group that corresponds with our elementary-age students. You have the 11 to 18-year-old group that corresponds to our secondary students, middle school, and high school. However, I will tell you that most 18-year-olds at this point, because of the point in the year we are, they're at college, they're not in our high schools. You have a population size estimate for each of those groups, then you have the number of cases. Again, this was a snapshot, but it was a seven-day snapshot, the previous seven days for when this was built, and then we converted that to a per 100,000. So you see that the case rate among our 5 to 10-year-olds within our schools is lower than 5 to 10-year-olds community-wide. You see that our case rate for 11 to 18-year-olds is considerably lower for our schools compared to the community as a whole. And then staff, this is a really hard comparison to make, there's so few instances to begin with, and estimating the number of staff that are actually in buildings has been a challenge. 5,000 is more than exists within our buildings. Obviously, we employ more than that, but they're not all inside of our buildings. But that case rate, again, is lower than the case rate for those folks over 18-years-old So I think before we go to superintendent recommendation, I know that Ms. Kerwin is happy to answer questions. I'm also happy to answer questions. Should you have some questions related to the slides we had been using earlier in our discussion several weeks back? We've got some additional slides that we can share, but I only think that's relevant if you have those questions.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Lamarcas and Ms. Kerwin, and appreciate you both being able to cover all the information. I know there were supposed to be more for total to go through all this, but great to have both of you, so I'll look. Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to both of you. And Ms. Kerwin, thank you for all of your help throughout this entire process. I mean, your expertise, your knowledge, and your, just your wholehearted jumping in and being a part of this thing has really made a difference for us, so thank you. If we can go back, Dr. Lamarcas, if we can go back to earlier in the presentation, new daily cases. Let's see if I can find my own slide that says that. I think that's it, yeah. No, it's not the risk meter, it's, let's see, new daily, new daily cases, it's a...
Was it the graph I showed you?
It wasn't a graph, it's, it's that one.
Okay.
It looks a little different way over there than it does here, so yeah. It's here, I can see it much better here. My question is, I know that we were all, as a community, warned by everybody that really be careful around Labor Day weekend and so on, and that's when our uptick started from a community standpoint. And then I see that we've had another little jump, and then we're kind of coming down, but we haven't dropped back down. Is there any, any, in your professional opinion in which you're seeing, anything causing that? I mean, I was hopeful, one, that we wouldn't have a Labor Day tick, but obviously we did. But I was hopeful that once we kind of got through that, it would drop back down because we were really, and for most of the month of September up until, I mean, up and for August up until then, our numbers were really starting to look really favorable as a community.
This is a question that does come up often. Unfortunately, there's not one specific action that our community did or did not take that led to the increase in cases. We've seen an increase in outbreaks at workplaces, both large and small. We've seen an increase among our 18 to 24-year-olds that really took off around the same time, both those who attend college campuses, TMCC, UNR, and those who do not. That is consistent with the population globally that seems to be driving this pandemic, those between the ages of 20 and 30. We also did have some long-term care facilities, skilled nursing facility outbreaks. Those usually do move quickly through those facilities, unfortunately, and it really was driven by a whole gamut of all of those contributing factors. It wasn't that everybody kind of let down their guard specifically on Labor Day weekend. I think it's COVID fatigue across a wide range of factors, and we're seeing that play out, unfortunately, in many aspects of our community.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's bad news. Thank you.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to echo Trustee Taylor's, Vice President Taylor's comments of gratitude to you and also to everybody on the staff and throughout Taylor's comments of gratitude to you and also to everybody on the staff and throughout the community that's been working so hard on this. I think that the chart showing the WCSD COVID data dashboard trends that shows the contrast between the population occurrence and the occurrence within our schools is really a testament to how hard everybody has worked to make this happen. And I know we have our own contact tracing going down, going on within the district with new, new staff, but I also know that the Health District has done a tremendous job of that, so I want to thank you for that. Kind of tagging on to Vice President Taylor's comment, what's the concern with regard to possible spikes that may occur after fall break, which we have just completed, and then after Thanksgiving? Is there a concern that, I know the university is telling students not to come back after Thanksgiving, and is there a concern that we may be at risk following those, those breaks?
There has been across the pandemic spikes that have occurred, so to speak, after holidays and long weekends. I think the most important thing to remember is that now since Labor Day, we've actually seen ongoing social gatherings occur, and it's really, if people are not traveling in high-risk settings, which here in the United States, we are among, of course, the most, most high-risk globally speaking, I think if people remember in any way that they engage, travel, whatever they do, that social distancing, hand washing, and mask rein are always going to be the, the top three tools that we have right now to prevent transmission. And that any, it only takes, you know, 15 minutes within six feet of somebody to be considered exposed to that, and we've, we have seen some instances where it is right there at the 15-minute mark and questionable of whether it was six feet or not, and people have unfortunately come down with it. So I'm not so concerned at this point about specifics related to holidays. I think that people who are willing to take risks and engage in high-risk behaviors are going to do so outside of a holiday or a break setting.
May I add briefly? I would like to mention that I think it's a really good question. I think there are some unique aspects of UNR that are different than the school district in particular. The age group is the older age group, where we're seeing greater spread. The timing of the vacation is after Thanksgiving, or it's during that week, and it would return, and then they have the winter break is short enough to where I think they're just trying to stop things in their tracks. I also think that they're anticipating more travel among their students than we would probably typically see with our students. Now, we were just at fall break, and I'm sure there was a lot of travel, but I do think there's some significant differences that make that a little bit different than ours.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I just checked the Washoe County dashboard that showed we're, under the governor's criteria, we're now at, in our county, 463 per 100,000 for 30 days. And, you know, when we look at the regression analysis, the trend is definitely continuing to go up since September 15th. We've had ups and downs, but it's steadily going up, and I'm wondering if there are any things, any, any more or additional things that we can be doing at the district? I know our own, our own case experience is helpful. It's, that's, that's really good information to have. Is there something else, something more we can be doing? Because we all, as a community, have got to get our arms around this. Washoe County is the, has the worst experience in the state, and are there things that we can be doing to be helpful in supporting good partners?
I can mention a couple of things, and then maybe Ms. Kerwin would like to comment. I checked the meter too just before we got up, and so today's an interesting example. There's 100 new cases posted today. 90 of those cases are among folks 19-years of age and older. Now, it's not always like that, but actually, today was really good news. We are getting case rates, again, per 100,000 on average, and those have dropped down significantly. It could spike right back up tomorrow. We've seen a lot of increase. We, I did reach out to our Chief Accountability Officer, Mr. Hayes, and Michelle Hammond. We're trying to, and this is actually a suggestion that came up at the mayor's task, or the mayor's COVID committee meeting, the last one. We are trying to enlist some students that are very facile with social media to do some messaging to their peers, reminding them of how important it is to stay vigilant. I do think that people are experiencing COVID fatigue. I actually think that just watching my own sons, watching myself, I think I'm safer when I'm in public and at work than I am at home.
And I would agree with Paul. The only thing I would add is to please communicate, you know, as we, we communicate with the school district, staff, and employees administration. My team is doing all that they can to make sure they prioritize all of our pediatric cases, both public schools, charter, private, daycare, any childcare setting, that those cases are picked up as soon as they're reported to us. And we're not going to do everything perfectly. We know that. We haven't to date, but we're learning to improve every time, and if there's something that you notice or that you hear that's not going well, we'll do all that we can to correct it as, as much as we can, that's in our control. So I would say that open channels of communication, which thus far have been, working to continue to keep those up, would be helpful from our perspective. And as a community, everything that Paul had mentioned, there's, you know, it's, it's hard.
Thank you. We'll just add on to that, you know, one thing I would like to see from our district, and I think it would be a collaborative effort with the county, something outside of those recommendations.